Evening, I want to call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners October 15th Meeting to Order. I ask Commissioner Allen to open us with an invocation.
Thanks, sir. Please bow your heads.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing, help as we are gathered together. Pray for your guidance in matters at hand, ask that you clearly show us how to conduct our work with spirit, joy, and enthusiasm for the citizens of Columbia County. Thank you for the many blessings and grace that you have gifted to us for living in such a wonderful community and such a great nation. Always, we ask that you look out for and protect those who look out for and protect us. In your name.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic of the Father, Nation, God, Israel.
Let the record show, we have a full forum for this meeting. Commissioners, you have the minutes from our previous meeting, October 1st. If they meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to do so.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Onto the agenda, I know we have a couple of changes. Got the F1, is it F1 or A1G? Is moved to I1B1?
Correct, that's an item that was on consent that will go to the debate agenda due to some language change.
Mrs. Bargeron is not able to speak.
That is correct, that's been removed, correct.
Super. Well, just want to welcome back everyone here for this, for the commission meeting. Thank you for attending, we'll move straight into special recognitions. Alius has our October 2019 Employee of the Month.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Okay. To read the bio, Donna McKeacham was born and raised in New York City, New York, and has seven grown children and five grandchildren. They're all a very close-knit family even though two of their sons are away in the military. She's been with Savannah Rapids for two years and loves what she does because it gets her outside and every day is different. Always greeting our regular park patrons and taking care of her park and buildings. Donna also cleans the exhibition center during and after each event. We're so thankful Donna is part of our team, her pride and dedication shows every day. Appreciate her very much. A dollar, plaque, and $100.
Thank you for all that you do and your attitude, how you approach the job day-to-day basis. Gush is about you, so I'm going to turn it over to Sandy Bonner, who's the...
Oh, I just, she's only been with us two years, but she's made such an impact on the department. We all love her, she's a team player, great attitude, and she's tall, so she can support us.
All right. Award the 2019 Team of the Third Quarter, the Park and Maintenance Team, Parks and Rec. Please come on down.
The Team of the Quarter up here?
Holy cow.
And Mr. Botham.
We weren't that popular, they had to be here for a reason.
Look at the spread, somebody order that one. Look at her that way. We have everybody here. I'll start off by just saying congratulations to all of you, and what I have to say will pale comparison to what Mr. Botham will have for us, so.
Don't make promises.
However, we have, raise your hand when we recognize you, Brandon Martin, Johnny Williams, Marcus Johnson, Anthony Childs, Tripp Carruth, Jose Perez, Corey Murray, Ron Kitchens, Kevin Boyer, Russell Rainey, Sean Caglini, I could do that, didn't you? Dewayne Lowe, Lane Karanich, Jerry Whitaker, Josh Stewart, DeMarco Nelson, Caitlin Bowling, Gary Lee, Sally Fowler, and Cassandra Grissom. And here is your cup, I'm going to let Mr. Botham carry on here.
I work in our Community Events Department, and I am in that park just about every single day because we manage everything from birthday parties in little pavilions to the three-day festivals like, shameless plug here, Hispanic Festival coming up this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, starting at 6:00 PM Friday night. Also, the big concerts, Masters Week, and one of the more fateful and well-remembered events, unfortunately not for the right reasons, but if you look at the screen, it was Banjo BQ, a fateful Friday, May of last year, I was there alongside Scott Johnson, Matt Schlochter, Glenn Kennedy, John Luton, and others unloading turf dry, all of these guys, as fast as we could into that mud bog that you see up there. The picture to the right of it is what it looks like today. It's an unbelievable transformation. It's kind of like, for parents, you don't see how much a kid grows day-to-day, but when you look back 18 months later, that's May of last year, and that's currently what Evans Town Center Park looks like. And it's more than just the grass, it's pulling the weeds under the shrubs, it's getting the details, it's keeping the bathrooms and everything else clean. God bless you. I saw the crew there this weekend when we had a big concert, it was a sea of litter, and nobody went home until almost sunrise Sunday morning to make sure that it was spotless when everybody came out to walk or do whatever they want to do with their families on Sunday, the event was on Saturday night. It's a tireless effort, and it's clearly a labor of love to keep it looking like that. It is frankly better than it's ever been, so if you haven't been over there at Evans Town Center Park recently, take the time to go by, take a look at it, and thank this crew up here because they've done an amazing job. Thank you all.
You're going to have to snuggle.
I got to bring the, put the trophy up front, man, get the trophy in the shot. There you go.
There you go.
There you go, act like you like each other.
Not in the picture, you don't get your 20 bucks.
Thanks again. Thank you all again, you do do a great job, and it is a little bit thankless, and I think we all take it for granted, but it is appreciated.
So they were like just here for the 20 bucks and the award?
They got their picture, there's proof.
Next, Mr. Reese Bridges wants to discuss the River Oaks, River Island Development Plan on Blackstone Camp Road. So Reese, state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Yeah, my name's Reese Bridges, and I live at 820 Kestrel Drive in Evans. I spoke to this group, to the Board of Commissioners in March about the development on Blackstone Camp Road, and I would like to talk to you, make a presentation to you about our concerns, and make four requests to the Board of Commissioners related to the Grand Oaks at River Island Development that is under review and in planning services now. See if I can get this to work. So, to look at the concerns, the Grand Oaks at River Island Development is currently being reviewed by the, by Planning Services for approval. The grading plan was approved in July, and the grading is underway without development plan approval. There was no traffic study done that was requested in the March Columbia County Planning Services denial letter to the developer. The Blackstone Camp Road just does not have the pedestrian and traffic infrastructure to support future development. If you look at, children and traffic safety are a major concern to the residents in that area. There's no sidewalks, there's not adequate turning lanes, there's dirt shoulders for turning lanes, there's no crosswalks, there's automobiles backed up going either way, bringing their kids to school and from, and I'll talk about that a little bit more later on. Children are walking down the stormwater ditches, you know, going home, and school buses, you know, going out to Furious Ferry when they have to go left off of Blackstone Camp on the Furious Ferry, they go through the Walmart parking lot, so. See a little bit more about that just shortly. So I have four requests. The first is going to be, we have a petition that, that you saw back in March, and since then, it's, the signatures have grown, and I'll talk about that just shortly. Columbia County has asked it to fund and obtain grants to improve pedestrian and traffic safety on Blackstone Camp Road. We're also asking the Board to delay approval of the Grand Oaks at River Island Development until road infrastructure improvement plans can be put in place to support this development. And then finally, we're asking the Board to request for a public hearing for the Grand Oaks River Island Development because of the property line changes that are being requested. So if you look at the first request, we're asking you to review for consideration our petition. We've got, we've tripled our signatures from March, we're up to 1,011 signatures to deny rental apartments on Blackstone Camp Road. You know, basically, the local community does not want rental multifamily apartments on this, on this road. There isn't any in that area, and it doesn't, it's not within the GMP. Since the Grand Oaks at River Island Development has grandfathered county zoning approval, the developer has been asked to market the development as condominiums versus rental apartments to reduce the transient impact to the local community. The Board of Commissioners, as you, you do have the authority not to approve this development because it doesn't fit within the GMP Vision 2035. However, because this was grandfathered, you know, you, as I've indicated, you may face a legal battle in not approving this plan. The developer, we asked the developer to work with the Board and the county to find options for development consistent with the Columbia County Management Growth Plan, but the developer was not interested, and no option was found for other property that was in a GMP Activity Center. River Island, these two parcels, parcel 10 and 6, the 6 is the Grand Oaks at River Island, are the only, the two main remaining undeveloped apartment sites that are not in a GMP Activity Center, Columbia County. The developer, the, as was said back in March, the developer apartment construction request would not have been allowed if the property had not already been zoned for apartments. And, and as in the petition, all the area on Blackstone Camp Road is all single-family. This goes back to, the developer has grandfathered apartment zoning that goes back 17 years, and well before the county designated apartment locations adjacent to Activity Centers, and noted in the 2010 multifamily housing study. Second request is that Columbia County fund and obtain grants to improve pedestrian and traffic safety on Blackstone Camp Road, including Stallings Middle School, surrounding community entrances, and the connectors to Furious Ferry and Point Comfort Road. You look here, you've got a plot plan of Stallings Island, you've got 11 buses that go in and out, see the traffic flow for pickup and it, drop-off by the residents, got automobiles backed up on Blackstone Camp Road, all the way up the road, using the dirt, dirt shoulders with the cars, no crosswalks, there's no sidewalks, you've got children walking from the school down to stormwater dishes, ditches on either side of the Blackstone Camp Road. And maybe this short video, this will work, will just show you. Running on. Not going to work. Well, you can see the, it worked a few minutes, sorry about that. You can see the cars backed up here, you can see them backed up here making a left turn into drop the kids off. You'll have the video, I'll give it to you if you want to take a look at it later on. The other, the next request, the third request, is to delay approval of the Grand Oaks River Island Development due to lack of infrastructure on Blackstone Camp Road until some kind of plans are put in place to support this development. If you look at Blackstone Camp Road, here, the, you've got turning, turning left on Blackstone Camp Road is not an issue, I mean, turning right, but if you're going to turn left, you've got to go through the market, you know, and this is where the buses and most of the automobiles go, make, then they get on Evans Lock and then make a left turn. So it's quite a dangerous situation that goes on daily. And then the fourth request is to, a request for a public rezoning hearing for the development plan that's been submitted because there's a request for property line changes involving 25% of the property. There's a, if you look at the green, there's a retention pond that's been added on the adjacent property that is zoned for townhouses. Then there's also a request for an easement to change from apartments to townhouses on the yellow, which amounts to about six acres out of the, out of the 24 acres, so it's about 25% of the property. So that's the, that's the request. So thank you for your, giving me the opportunity to speak to the Board of Commissioners and to address these four requests.
Let me just, to be clear on a couple of subjects, Matt, you have to work with me on this stuff, but deny the request to approve the development, is there a request in to change?
No, sir, we have not received a formal request to change any zoning at this time. There's been discussion about it, but we have not received that formal request.
So if there's a request, there will be a rezoning hearing.
Okay.
There's a request.
There's been, in the development plan, there's a request for a change of the property line, right now?
No, sir. But when they, when they first came in your right, there was a talk about moving the property line. It has not been done, and they have not made a formal request to do.
Good, good, okay.
Secondly, the infrastructure, I know we're working with the state to hopefully get a traffic light at Blackstone.
We are, we have, I apologize. Part of our Furious Ferry Roadwinding project, we are looking to put a signal at the intersection of Blackstone and Furious Ferry. Our problem is, is there's warrants we have to meet to install that signal. What you just showed in your presentation is that people are avoiding our intersection to get a signal, which hurts us in getting our signal, so if we could all team up and start using the intersection, our numbers would be better, and we could then get it. So by avoiding the intersection, it hurts us, so.
You can't get out.
I understand, but if I don't have that data, I can't do it. I mean, the state controls the intersection, but until we give the state the true numbers, the state's never going to approve the signal, so we have to have those numbers. Got to get to pick a day where y'all all know that don't cut through the parking lot, we'll go there and do it for town.
One day?
We can do that.
We hold the signal just as bad as you do, we have to justify it.
We can do that.
Can't do that, won't let us, it has to be at the intersection.
Yeah, you're talking state government, so it's another level we have to work through.
Yeah, it's a thoroughfare through Walmart parking lot.
I understand, I've seen it.
And in regards to infrastructure, and part of the, and you mentioned a traffic study, well, the traffic study would say they have to put turn lanes and all the things they have to do, well, the developer's already committed to do that without the traffic study. So we don't have to do a study because they've committed, am I correct?
Yeah, they're in the plans, the plan showed turn lanes both in the River Island, turn lane, apartment complex. They did all that without paying a traffic engineer to tell them they need to do it.
Okay.
And as far as the grants, can you speak to that?
Yeah, the bill's actually reached out to the Board of Education, we're looking at all kinds of grant opportunities to find funding for sidewalks, safer routes to schools, there's programs out there, so we're reaching out, it's just you got to wait for that funding cycle, so we're absolutely trying to find funding for sidewalks.
I mean, I think, I, I did see that there is turn lanes put in, you know, for the development, but the issue is further up Blackstone Camp Road with Stallings Middle School, and I, and I hope that you can take a look at the video later on, and you can see daily what happens with the traffic flow on Blackstone Camp Road.
This, our reality is.
It's all over Columbia County.
Right, so can we unilaterally rezone them without their approval? Yes, we could. The net effect of that is, they're going to sue, they're going to win, and not only we're going to pay their attorney fees, we're going to pay part of the cost to build the dang building. And so, I sympathize, I don't, I don't want them, my mom, like, did I sign this petition? I said, "Mom, it's up to you." My mother lived over that way. Again, the reality is, they have the zoning to do what they need to do, and all it's going to do is cost taxpayers dollars. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. How wrong?
The lawyer, we're not... Well, we're just expressing our views and concern residence in Blackstone Camp Road, and the biggest issue is that, is the traffic situation that we've got on Blackstone Camp Road, we've got a big development that is coming, you know, of apartments, of 250 apartments, and that much more load on that, when the road can't handle it, what it's got now with Stallings Middle School, when you look at that, and that's a concern. And we're just asking the county to look at, and look at funding, and, and getting grants to put a plan in place, particularly for Stallings Middle School, and we're going to be speaking to the Board of Education in the next meeting coming up on the 20th.
There is, on our TIA-2 list, there is a Blackstone Camp Road function in there. Thanks, Reese.
Again, thank you.
Much.
Thanks, sir.
Can I ask you a question, Matt?
Yes, sir.
When a school is built, does the Board of Education put that infrastructure in, and how did that get by at that time? I know they don't have to really come to us, I don't think.
They do, if they're touching our roads, they do have to deal with us, and back then, when that was built, we didn't have the relationship we do now. If you look at the current schools that are big schools that are being constructed, you'll see turn lanes, you'll see a much longer stacking aisle inside the school limits. They understand they've created some traffic issues, they've addressed it in all the schools. Problem is, we have a school that's been here since '05, '06.
Right.
We're in there, it was done prior to the new requirements for turn lanes, so that one got by us.
My daughter went there, middle school, and now she's a college graduate, been that long. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, Commissioners, you have items, the agenda that have been through committee and received the necessary votes to be placed on this. They meet with your approval, we can vote all at once on these items? So we have the consent agenda, all the items have received votes, I'll accept a motion to...
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries on to debate, Mr. Malier?
I make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from RA to M1 to PRD for property located at tax map 051049 with nine conditions. They're along, would you like me to go ahead and read those?
Are they wanted, they need to be on the record?
Proposal of 100 townhomes to be included in the rezoning request to PRD. Cemetery shown on the conceptual plan shall be delineated with an approved enclosure, the enclosure type and style shall be determined at final plat. The development is limited, limited to plating 300 lots until a second full access point is provided to Baker Place Road. The proposed phase that includes the Parkway connection to Canterbury Farms shall be constructed to the property line in conjunction with the approved preliminary plat for that phase currently shown as Phase Four. The code required access for future connection for the northern section of the development designated as Phase Five on the provided phasing plan shall be determined at the preliminary plat application. The proposed lot frontage for radial lots shall require review by staff and approval by the Planning Commission at preliminary plat submittal to ensure proper placement of utility services which require minimum distance from property lines and cannot be located under pavement, placement of street trees, and street lights in these sections, and concerns with residents or guests parking on the street in these areas and blocking driveways. Lot frontages within the stated following ranges shall have the following minimum side setbacks. 70-foot lots must have a side setback of 10 feet, 60-foot lots must have a side setback of 8 feet, and 50-foot lots must have a side setback of 6 feet, provided that all building elevations are required to follow all applicable building codes. Where houses are planned with exterior walls less than 8 feet or less from the side property line, the building permit submittals must include all ground-mounted building equipment to ensure proper compliance with applicable building codes. Any building equipment that is located in the front of the building must be adequately screened with landscaping. Each building permit application will include a signed approved letter or stamp of the building plans from the Architectural Review Board for the design of the home and any accessory structures. Parks shall not be reduced below the number of 18 quantities shown on the conceptual plan. Park types shall be determined at preliminary plat, and the overall development must include at least four of each type. Apologize for the length of that, there was a lot to cover.
Motion? I'm sorry. Read one again, I just want to be clear that I heard what you said.
100 townhomes.
100 townhomes. Second. Ivy, would you like to speak? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This has been a project we've been working on for a long time.
Name and address for that.
Mark Ivy, 730 Stonecrest Lane, Applin, Georgia. We've been working on this project a long time with staff and with engineering and different planning department personnel, and this plan's gone through a lot of different iterations. When we first started off, we were hoping to get some participation from the county for the spine road connection that would give a second exit point to Canterbury Farms. As we progressed with that, we were told, well, the county's not willing to participate. So at that point, we had to figure out, how do we make it work with us having to fund all of that? And to do that, we need density. And so we redesigned our layout, our original plan probably did show close to 100 townhomes. I believe it was actually... I believe it was actually about 125 or so. But when we have to pay for the spine road to go all the way through on our own and improvements that have to be done now to not only handle our lots, but the traffic that would also come through Canterbury Farms, if you figure there's 1,100 homes in Canterbury Farms and if you just assume 40% of those are going to come out this way, go into schools or go into Fort Gordon, the old Lewisville Road, then that's additional traffic we have to now design for and account for with everything that we're doing. And so to be able to do that, we have to have the townhomes in the zoning. I know it's more townhomes than, than y'all may be comfortable with, but they don't all get built at the same time. They get done in phases, just like all the other lots do. We would probably build something less than 60 per year. Right now in our other developments where we have townhome zoning in master plan communities, we average about four sales per month, that's about 48 units a year. So our desire would be to approve the plan as it was submitted with the 204 townhomes, but only allow 60 to be built per year. Understand too, that the density we show of 204, it's kind of a maximum density. As we begin to work through, you know, final layouts and engineering, you typically lose lots and the density goes down some. So we would just ask that it be approved as presented in our development plan, but then just change it to allow only 60 to be, to be built per year, or 60 to be platted per year. There'll be some years it may be less than 60, but it would average 60 per year. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. The setbacks, the six, eight, eight and 10, we were fine with that. We, we, we stated that at the planning commission meeting, that we were fine with making that change. That cost us probably about 25 to 30 lots, but, you know, in the spirit of cooperation, we're, we're fine with that. But, you know, we've done a great job with this, with the concept plan, 18 parks. I'm not sure there's another community out there that's got 18 parks and the level amenities that this will have. So to pay for that, pay for spine roads, infrastructure to support this, we need the density.
So you would prefer us to vote it down if it's not 200?
If it's not 200, it doesn't work. I can't close on a piece of land on a hope and a prayer that, that I'll get some additional density at some point down the road because I may not. And so we would, we would probably just walk away from the piece of property and move on, let somebody else come in if you see if they can figure out what to do with it.
Questions?
Yes, Mr. Ivy, I saw in one of the comments, you described this as being in a neighborhood center.
Right.
We have several neighborhood center. A lot of them are in my district. There's one up in Aplin, would you propose an identical development up a mile from your home?
Mr. Gallegos, when you ran for office, you and I talked about your district. And your district encompasses two areas of the county. One area of the county that has sewer infrastructure and is rapidly growing. Another area of the county that represents a more rural setting that doesn't have the infrastructure, doesn't have sewer in place. And I believe what you will see happen in your district is you will continue to see the denser growth occur along the I-20 corridor. That's where sewer is available, that's close to Fort Gordon, that's where you're seeing commercial growth as well. What you will see in the other parts of your district is more of a large lot development type growth, where people will be on wells or septic tanks, they could possibly have a water line. But that's the two types of development that the county would see. You would not see a development like this in the Aplin area because there's no sewer there. But there's sewer here. And so this is where, if we've got all these people coming from Fort Gordon and we've got to provide housing for them, then where, where are we going to put the housing? We've got to start approving some of these developments so that we can provide housing. And as part of that, we've got to provide a diversity of housing. We need all price points, we don't just need the four, five, six, $800,000 homes. We need the $150,000 townhome to go in the mix as well. So that person that's working as a school teacher or works in the planning department for Columbia County can afford to buy a new home in Columbia County and not have to go buy an existing home or buy, in a different county and not be able to live. So if we can, if we can concentrate our growth, our high density in certain areas, then we're not having to expand infrastructure all over the county. Now we're only having to approve roads in a much denser area, not all the way out. We don't have to run Washington Road, four lanes all the way to Lincoln County. So that growth is now concentrated back over in the Grove Town area or further into Evans. So that's part of good planning and this, this is part of that. We, we've got the growth in this area, the density's there. Canterbury Farms has townhomes. It was the number one selling community till we ran out of lots for probably seven or eight years. Hidden Creek off Baker Place Road has townhomes. Glory off Baker Place Road has townhomes. Riverwood Plantation has townhomes. Crawford Creek has townhomes. All of these master plan communities have a townhome element to them. That's the best place to put a townhome because in those master plan communities, those are also being charged the master association fee plus their sub-association fee. So those homeowners within that master association help control and make sure that those townhome developments are held to a higher standard. And so if we're gonna, if we're gonna do townhomes and we're gonna do a large number of them, the best place to do them is in a master plan community and not go out here on a piece of land in an activity center and say, I'm going to build 200 townhomes on this, you know, 20-acre piece of land and there's no, there's no master association, they are, they are a beast unto themselves. And so you have more control when we can put them in these master plan communities.
Why did, what?
No, 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 no.
Why did that get left off the growth management plan, Mark? Why, I mean, because we just got criticized about the growth management plan and, and, and what, what we're being asked tonight is to vary from that growth management plan. So why did townhouses get excluded like you were just stating that's where they needed to be? How'd we miss that?
I think it was an oversight because when the maps were done, if you look at how they're colored up, there's existing neighborhoods that have townhomes in them that are colored like a neighborhood character area. And so I think it was just an oversight. If you look at the growth management plan on the page that talks about neighborhood character, do you know what there's a picture of? The cottages at Champions Retreat and a house in Bishop's Court. And that's just not reflective of a neighborhood in Columbia County. That's the very top end and part of, one of them is not even a neighborhood, it's cottages at a golf course. And so it's not representative of what needs to be built in Columbia County to support the population that we have here. So I believe it was more of an oversight on everybody's part. You know, all of these documents are written and then you figure out what was, what the errors that were made in them. And so I think that is one of the things that needs to be looked at when it's up for review in the next year.
Will be for next year.
Right.
What's, what is the impact of seven and a halfs? What's that back as opposed to a six foot?
You know, when, when we, when we look at the setbacks, we have a, you know, everybody thinks the setback, every house is going to be built to the maximum on every lot. What we have is I have a list of plans that we build. And let's say I want a section that needs to be up to 2,400 square feet. Well, okay, my plan's to 2,400 square feet varying width from 28 to 44. All right, well, okay, what can I fit on that lot and how's that setback impact me? Just being able to get a little bit extra width over there allows me to maybe in some cases get one more plan to be able to fit into that mix. And that's really, that's really what it's, what it does for is it just gives us a little more flexibility on our list of house plans to maybe I can capture one more plan in that, in that lot mix that's a little bit wider than the rest of them.
All right, thank you.
I have another question, Mr. Ivy. When we came up with the PRD, I was on the planning commission and I think what we're called on now is setbacks. Seven and a half, five, 10, whatever. Personally, I think when we put that document forward, there was some intent for square footage to be some, some larger lots, some 10,000 square foot, some eights, some six, and some townhomes. And, and, and we have discussed that, but, so I think we're, we're missing what I think the perceived document to be from the start was some, some more square footage for the lots, if that makes sense. And, and I understand, I, I, I hear you, I understand. I know you're trying to get as many and, and, and everybody is when they do a development, they're trying to get as many out of it. But I just, I just don't know that everybody's on the same page of what the intent of what PRD was, if that makes sense.
It does.
On both ends, on the, on the top end and on the bottom end.
Well, if you, if you recall, when, when PRD was set up, the county put in place a study committee that said, go out and look. And it was people from the building, development community, engineering community, people at large, planners. It was 15 or 20 people and we met for what seemed like two months and talked about, what are we going to do? What should the setbacks be? We all came back and recommended seven and a half feet as just the standard setback. The county said, no, we're going to make it 10 feet, but we'll give you seven and a half and less if you'll do a better job with your land planning. So it's kind of like you're going to dangle a carrot in front of us and say, well, 10 is the number, but if you do a good job, then I'll give you less. And I think that's why you see plans like this that get done because we're, we're trying to get a little bit less of a setback to be able to get a little more density in there, to be able to pay for some of what's, what's going on there. So that's, that was the carrot that was used to entice, you know, a little bit better job on our land planning.
Another question. On this green space, is any of it larger than an acre?
On the parks or the green space?
Parks, green space, whatever.
There's probably some areas in there that are probably a little bigger than an acre, but most of them are less. Most of them are just little pocket parks, you'll have a room for, you know, a bench, maybe a playset in some of them. Our thoughts are that, you know, probably the smaller homes are going to be your young families, they're probably going to have small children. So those are going to be your areas where we probably go in and put a playset there so small children can go there and play. One of the feedbacks that we get from a lot of our HOA meetings that we go to is, hey, you did a great job with a pool, you did a great job with these pocket parks, but there's nowhere for our teenagers to go. They want to go throw a football or they want to go kick a soccer ball, where do they go? And that's why on this project, we've shown the activity fields and that will give the teenagers a place to go to, to interact and throw the ball. The pocket parks are really more intended for a social gathering area, for neighbors to come out in the afternoons. If they've got small kids, they can play, if it's adults, they can sit around and talk, it's more of a social interaction in those pocket parks.
Who's, who's going to maintain those?
The HOA will maintain all of it.
You'll be in charge of the HOA until you turn it over?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and if they're over an acre, is anybody going to cut them?
If they're over an acre, they're an active field, they will be, yes.
Okay. Because this same thing came up in Crawford Creek and there was a group that, I'm their commissioner. They called after they went to the developer and it wasn't getting taken care of. And then I asked the question, the question was, well, it doesn't have to be. Or the answer was, it doesn't have to be. So to give a citizen something that they think is going to be an amenity and it grown up waist, waist-high, that's not a, a amenity. And I, I, I just think however that gets done, it needs to be made sure, and I don't think we can because our ordinance doesn't cover it.
Right.
How that would be covered.
Well, if it's a, if it's a park area in front of houses, then that certainly gets maintained. What you see behind houses in a lot of cases are not parks, but just green space areas. Those areas, we try to allow to naturally re-vegetate. We stabilize them with grass initially, we'll try to go in there and plant pine trees during the winter months and get those trees growing so that we re-vegetate those areas over time. But while we're waiting on all that to occur, yes, some of those areas do begin to look a little overgrown, but we're trying to re-establish those areas and, and get those back to a natural area. In some cases, it's trying to provide those trees between houses again.
I have one more question, Mr. Ivy. As a developer, you're going to invite other builders to come in, into the project, is that correct?
There is a potential that we would. This is a pretty large project for us and so we may, we may sell lots to a few other builders. But we, we pick and choose those very carefully because of course they'd be competing directly with us. So we want to make sure what they're delivering is equivalent to what we would deliver.
All right, trust is a beautiful word. However, is there any kind of enforceable or formal covenant or memorandum of agreement with, between you and the builders as they build these homes?
Yes, we do have that. And then according to the, the conditions that were read, we have the, we have to review each plan and stamp it as, as the Architectural Review Board, the developer, we would have to approve each plan and, and that has to be done before they're submitted for building permit.
Thank you.
I, I, actually, Mr. Ivy, I, we spoke earlier and I know we lost contact, I saw you call me back, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to speak. I mean, I, I actually do like the plan. And, and, and as somebody that was here and we, when we read about the PRD, I take it in the spirit that, that you actually were relaying. I, I do think that character and, and trying to create an attractive aesthetically pleasing environment with more green space and more, was in my mind, that was certainly my intent, created that. And, and there was give and take. It was almost creating a, a little bit of a, of a rub in the, in the idea of it between the developer and the county in, in allowing give and take. I'll be honest, I, I, I do think it's a, a pretty good plan. I, I don't have a problem with the 60, 60 a year, John, but have a body here and, and want to do, at this point, based on the motion on the floor, or want to do what works best for you. Now, there is an understanding that if we were to prove it in its current motion, even if it's not ideal to you, we could revisit that at the next meeting and withdraw or change that in the next two weeks or so, any accommodation can't be made. So even if we were to prove it in its current state, that that's not, if that's not what you want, you have some flexibility there to work on that. Would that be your druthers or?
The biggest thing for us is we don't want something to get approved that doesn't work for us and then this landowner be stuck with it. So if it doesn't work for us, we will be back to requesting, just be withdrawn, he can move to the next person in line if he chooses to do so, or he can just sit on the property and, and wait to a later date to try to develop it. But what we've proposing is what it takes to make, make it work for us. And we need, we need the density to make the numbers work.
Okay.
I heard you loud and clear. First to turn it down, then to vote it.
In its current motion.
Yes. So is there any other, what?
Mr. Chairman, just, just one, one clarification, just as the motion is, is, has been read. If, if this body votes on the motion as it's been read tonight and it's approved, it will be approved. The idea of coming back at the next meeting is something that could be done, but it's not, not something that could guarantee.
Right.
Be done, correct. So just, just from Mr. Ivy's knowledge, once this is voted on tonight, if it's approved in this condition, it is, it is an approved zoning. If, if some of you decide that you don't want to revisit it, you, there's no guarantee of that. I just want to make that very clear tonight. So, you know, at this point, the way the motion is, is read, if it's unacceptable, then, then it may be in the best interest to either table it, if you're going to consider it at a later date, or to have Mr. Ivy withdraw it, just as a matter of procedure. And that's just something that the county attorney and I have discussed. Certainly you can act however you like, but, but it may be in everybody's best interest if you, if you're going to reconsider it or, or continue it for a period of time, tabling it may be a better idea than voting on it and then knowing you're going to come back in two weeks and undo something you did.
Don't believe we have a second, so it could die right now.
There is a second.
I did second.
There's a motion.
I, I seconded it as.
Yep, there's a motion.
But I, but I, again, I, I was seconding the affirmative for the project. But if it is not acceptable, and, and I, I do want to work with Mr. Ivy the way we can, to be honest with you. So I would not be opposed to another option.
Can the motion be amended? Or a substitute motion could be made.
That could happen.
I'm sorry? For a vote.
Yes, sir, you can make a substitute motion, the substitute motion will be heard before the other motion and if it negated it, then it would go away. So if somebody made a substitute motion to table it, you would hear that motion first.
You have a substitute motion?
Or to amend it. If you, if you made a motion to amend it, that motion would be heard first.
No, I, I've, I've got the sheet, I'm just trying to figure out how to navigate these. No, I, I, I've, I've got, um, just trying to figure out how to navigate these waters.
It's gonna be here to midnight if somebody's gotta read this.
No, we're not gonna read it again. Um, we, we've, we've battled this, you've been fighting this for several months, I don't know if delaying that argument anymore is gonna make, make much of a difference. I will ask the candidate if he wants to keep fighting.
Not, we can... I mean, if there's a chance for us to get it, we'll keep fighting, but if everybody's mind is made up, and a hundred is all you're gonna grant, then there's no sense in continuing it. We're wasting everybody's time and move on, you know, our thing is, we need it approved as, as it was submitted with the, the townhomes as shown. We would, we would like to ask that that be the substitute motion, that it be approved as, as presented with townhomes shown on the proposed master plan.
Well, I'm willing to make that substitute. I'm willing to, to make the substitute motion that, that it be, um, actually, my, my motion will be that we amend the condition to have the original proposed two...
Two hundred and four.
Two oh four townhomes. So, changing item one
Sixty a year or two hundred and four?
At sixty a year, at, at the pace of no more than sixty, um, built a year. Or a total of up to...
Built or platted, that's a big difference. Platted per year or built per year?
These are to track platted.
Platted is...
Flat.
Capps recommendation.
Platted. So let me, let me be clear, I would like to make a substitute motion that would be the same, do I have to read it all again, with the exception of item one, proposing up to two hundred and four townhomes at a rate of no more than sixty platted per year. That's it.
You have a second? I'll second it. So what discussion do we have? All in favor of the substitute motion, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Raise your right hand. Huh?
We got you. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor of the substitute motion, raise your right hand. All against the substitute motion, raise your right hand. Do we vote on the, the other one, or is it?
We have a motion on the floor.
All right, so we still have a motion on the floor on the first motion, and seconded. All in favor of the hundred lots, raise your right hand. All opposed? Fiery death. Alrighty. Next item is, uh, one eighty-two.
All right, one down, ten to go. Maybe these next ones will go by a little quicker. I make a motion to approve the request for a major revision to the existing S1 zoning for a portion of tax map zero one three zero zero nine, and deny the request for a rezoning from C2 to S1 for a portion of tax map zero one three zero zero nine with a major revision subject to the conditions enumerated in the October third planning commission report.
Is the revised revision?
Both.
Oh. You have a second?
What would, yeah, there, I'm second to motion, what?
This is the one on Old Lincolnton Road.
I, I got it. I'll second.
Okay, yeah. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand?
I make a motion to request for a major revision to the existing PUD zoning for tax map zero five one thirteen twenty-five, in order to reduce the side building setbacks to accommodate the existing house, subject to conditions enumerated in the October third planning commission report, with the additional... Subject to the conditions, not the ones enumerated in the October third planning con- planning commission report, but before that I'm about to read here. Number one, exterior walls must have a fire resistance rating of a one hour rated assembly tested in accordance with ASTME one nineteen or UL two sixty-three with exposure from both sides. Number two, projections must have a one hour rating on the underside. Number three, openings in wall must be twenty-five percent or less of the wall area. Number four, penetrations must comply with section R three oh four point four.
What?
Just say yes.
Second?
Second, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand?
I have a sister motion to make with this, make a motion to approve the request for a major revision to the existing PUD zoning for tax map zero five one one three two four, in order to reduce the side building setbacks to accommodate the existing house, subject to the conditions, not the ones enumerated on October third planning commission report, but the four I read here. Number one, exterior walls must have a fire resistance rating of a one hour rated assembly tested in accordance with the ASTME one nineteen or UL two sixty-three exposure from both sides. Number two, projections must have a one hour rating on the underside. Number three, openings in wall must be twenty-five percent or less of the wall area. And number four, penetrations must comply with section R three oh four point four. These are two houses that are right next to each other.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand?
Make a motion to approve the request for a major PUD revision to revise the concept plan, building setbacks and uses for property located at tax map zero eight two zero eight zero A, subject to the conditions enumerated in the October third planning commission report.
Second.
Doctor?
This is an existing PUD that, um, we have a revised concept plan here for, basic, the majority of the changes are pushing the buildings to the front of the lot versus the rear of the lot, putting the parking behind them, also a reduction in the square footage of those buildings. That's, that's, that's the gist of the thing, it's basically the, the list of uses changed a little bit, I believe, also, um...
It opens to all C1 categories now, correct? There were some listed in the previous, but now it's open to all C1.
Right on that one, that's correct.
Is there a, there's a fence by, between the houses?
There's, there's required structural buffer, um, it's a twenty foot buffer, so because it's a structural buffer, it will require a fence to go in there. Talking about that earlier, it could be a six foot tall fence, eight foot tall fence, will be on top of a slope, the parking lot's gonna be lower than the, where the fence line will be, so it will be elevated, helpful. Dumpsters will be pushed out to the front. Clothes will make it work during plan review, but it, dumpsters won't be near the, the residents, they'll be pushed out to the front. Have to see when the plans come in, it's not a requirement of this.
Like to speak, you...
Would you like to speak?
Name and address of the record.
Come, 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 come up to the front.
We were just wondering that...
Tell me some of your name and address.
My name is Luke Edelmeier, I live at five five seven Forest Crossing. So this will be along my backyard, which is currently all trees right now, and one reason why we moved into the house is because we don't have anyone facing us, and now this will be facing our Furious Ferry Road, so everyone that drives by will be seeing our backyard, so that's kind of...
That's why they have to put up a fence.
Yeah, so that's why I'm wondering, is it a six foot fence, is it an eight foot fence? What is the height of the fence?
It's required to be at least six foot tall, but they can go higher.
Okay. And then, I guess they were zoning it for a laundromat?
That, that was one of the previous could be's, I don't even know a laundry, is laundromats still under C1? Well, I don't know if we have, we do have some.
There's a laundromat up on Bastin Road and, and, uh, Furious Ferry, so I don't think we need another one, but I know a laundromat would not be advantageous, I don't want people being in my backyard at two o'clock in the morning waiting for their laundry.
Clothes.
Yeah, and being bored and find something else to do in my backyard.
Mr. Allgood, do you have something to say? He, he is the owner of...
Okay.
Andy Allgood, Dental Practice four nine one Furious Ferry Road, not too far from this property, and I live on two five five Riverbend Drive in Carls Hill, South Carolina. All right, this is, uh, I understand your concerns, and that's one reason that we wanted to get this revision. They did list in the original thing, it was nineteen eighty-three, uh, I guess a laundromat was more critical then, than it is now, that, uh, as far as I know, there are no plans in now or in the future, I think the only time a laundromat would be used during Masters Week, that, uh, might, it might be coming in handy then, but that's, that's not as far as any usage, as far as I see. Right now, it's a mixed use, retail, professional, so it's, you know, you can look, uh, up, right up, right across from where Earth Ferry is, that's shopping center right there.
I'm looking.
Uh, that is a concept plan, if you go out on Washington Road, this is where the building actually is closer to Furious Ferry, closer to Furious Ferry, so it's, um, this is also in the Furious Ferry car, which they're been involved with construction in the county, there's some pretty strict guidelines.
Be a twenty foot space between our fence and the property?
Uh, this is, uh, what we're seeing here, um, between the parking lot and the fence, that's twenty feet.
Trees that are already there?
Good question. Those are some different types of trees there. They're there, they'll save, but also the county is requiring something like this. What, and what do you call them, the, the big trees, cedars, cryptomere, that type?
Block.
Yeah, that thing like that, and the way they, Andy makes you do three rows.
We're gonna be planting trees in front of it.
They be, yes.
I mean, I just hear a lot of like need be, I just...
Well, depending on what vegetation is there.
That be done with a site plan?
Right, that'll be handled through architectural, won't it?
Yeah, when the site plan comes in, they'll have to show the grade, and this, this is drawn on a flat piece of paper, so they take in grades, and they set their building paths, set their parking elevations, get the stormwater design done, that'll determine the grade, that'll determine the slope, determine how much he has to touch, does require a twenty foot buffer, so if he does wipe it out, he's gotta go put it back. Obviously, we'd like to keep some of the mature stuff, but big tall pine trees don't provide a buffer at ten foot elevation, gotta come in there and supplement that, you gotta fill those gaps in, so...
Andy, um, a couple of things, uh, one, you, I imagine you want it to be aesthetically pleasing, you want it to be pretty, so...
Oh, for sure.
Kinda, I, I, I would trust, working with our staff, you'll, you'll try to do what's right there. What about the signage on this kind of building? How, how are you gonna handle that with the frontage right there on Furious, well, technically, the front's gonna be facing the back parking lot.
Right.
So how, what are your thoughts?
Could you go back to that, could you go back to the picture?
Front elevation, there you go.
Okay, that right there, that, there's some signage on the sides that shows what is in here, uh, some of that with the county, with the sign ordinances, you know, it all depends, as, as far as when you look at the parking lots, and also sometimes there will be medians there, where you could have like a monument sign, but nothing that's gonna be thirty feet tall.
But we don't, you don't necessarily plan on having anything on this side facing Furious Ferry, everything's gonna be internal, with maybe a monument that'll show what is inside.
Correct.
But the individual shingles will be facing the parking lot, facing the neighborhood.
Correct. This is a concept that, uh, I, I was working on a project and wound up selling the property, but that Andrew Strickland was, was bringing forth, where, where you have the quote, back of the building facing the property, facing the, the road, but you have to also increase the appearance of the back of the property, and with your, the placement of the, uh, HVAC, that type thing, have to really be careful with that.
Thanks, Andy.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Is there any way to ensure that a laundromat can't be built?
Have a substitute motion.
You can put that in as a condition.
All right. But also, um, do we know how this affects resale value of the homes afterward?
You know, when you moved in and it was woods?
Yeah.
Wanted it to stay woods? Audit.
Well, it was already bought.
It's private property, so it's, you know, he has the right to develop it, so, but it shouldn't affect.
Well, I know in the, in the past... Well, that's what I was saying, back in the, back in the eighties, they, the people that lived in the neighborhood wanted to buy the land, they told them, they didn't need to worry about that, they didn't need to buy it, because it would never be developed. And so now there's a lot of people in the neighborhood who are saying, well, gosh, we would've bought this for cheap back in the eighties, but now we were promised it would never be developed.
Sir, I, I really hate to express to you that sitting in these chairs for a long time, I've heard that a lot, uh, and, and I'm, I'm not diminishing your, your claim, but, uh, that claim is, I, that story is repeated many a time, uh, that someone told them that something would happen downrange, and if it's private property, then it's just not gonna be an enforceable item, and whoever told them that is gone.
Okay.
Sorry, sir.
I said that you edit your motion for a new condition, no laundromats?
May I do that?
Do whatever you wanna do.
God, you're all good, would you protest if I've made that motion? I would like to amend my motion to include all of the pre-stating conditions, including what was enumerated in the October third planning commission report, and that there shall not be a laundromat in this development.
I'd like to, uh, add one more thing, sorry, at least an eight foot fence back the houses.
And an eight foot fence.
Privacy fence.
Second that.
Got all that, Ms. Patrice?
Ms. Patrice, you got a big job.
I do, but...
Because it's an amendment, not a, not a substitute
That's correct.
In motion.
An amended motion, so the person that made the motion has to amend it.
Uh, does a laundromat fall under C1, Will? Cause it does.
Where are we? Other than Evan, I got the evidence.
You're blowing our average.
I will, I will, I'll, I'll amend, but I, I don't like striking the guy, you know, but to put something that's in our category.
Well, if he's here and he's good with it, I mean...
I'm good, I'm good.
So, and to be clear, that's on the laundromat issue, on the fence issue, are you amending your motion there as well?
For the eight foot fence.
For an eight foot fence?
Right.
Okay, now you have an amended motion, Mr. Chairman?
All in favor of the amended motion, raise your right hand? Oh, was there a second?
The amended motion?
Second, second. I'm still second.
Okay, thank you.
No.
There you go.
We're good, we're good.
Arm's getting tired.
Right hand? Oppose, left?
So we don't have to go back to the original one, cause we, all right.
Right.
Wow, all right, let's keep moving. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section ninety dash nine eight, list of lot and structure requirements, and ninety dash one three nine buffers and screening to reduce the front setbacks and buffers for property located at tax map zero eight two E, parcel zero seven two, subject to the conditions enumerated in the October third planning commission report.
You have a second?
Second.
Will allow an additional bay to be added to an existing building on a corner lot, he...
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section ninety dash nine eight, list of lot and structure requirements for property located at tax map zero six two zero eight six I, to reduce the front building setbacks to one hundred feet from the center line of Horizon South Parkway, and twenty-five feet from the right of way of the Gateway Boulevard.
Second. Questions? Favor, raise your right hand?
I make a motion to approve the first reading of revol- resolution nineteen dash three one for the retreat at Baker Place Phase Four, SLD five oh seven D, with upfront pole cost of six thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and sixty-six cents, and annual utility cost of two thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars and eight cents. Resolution nineteen dash three two for the Lenzmore Section Three, SLD four five four J, with upfront pole cost of four thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-one cents, annual utility cost of one thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars and forty-eight cents, and developer contribution of one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. Resolution nineteen dash three three for the Stallings Ridge Section Two, SLD five one seven B, with upfront pole cost of seven thousand one, seven thousand twenty-two dollars and eighty-five cents, annual utility cost of three thousand oh twenty-five and eighty cents, and developer contribution of three thousand sixty dollars.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand? First reading, so...
Keep it short, Trey.
Please.
I make a motion to approve an agreement with Layer Three Communication for Managed Sec- Security Services in the amount of seventy-seven thousand nine dollars and fifty-four cents.
in the amount of $77,009.54.
Second. Then you want to explain why this moved?
It'd be nice to talk about something besides development. Variances and...
Setbacks.
So the, after this action passed through committee, Layer 3 reached out to us and asked us to change the language that was in Section 10.2 pertaining to intellectual property. As written, it was very general. They are using proprietary software, and they just want to put measures in place to make sure that it's safeguarded. So it's more specific. Doesn't change the terms. Absolutely.
Terms, okay. Questions? Do we have a motion, second?
We did.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Try and read them.
Hard work, Trey.
No legal matters.[1681.82]